Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
And Dave Avdalla.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Constance.
Here.
Lisa Hicks-Layton is absent. Denise Melonowski-Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Lisa Muscat to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Everyone, please be seated. This time, we have agenda approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that the order of business for the November 13th, 2018 meeting be approved.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdella. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. This is the minutes from the regular meeting of October 23rd, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I move that we approve the minutes from October 23rd, 2018. Regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined in item 4A.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wenzel. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearing and comment on agenda items. We ask that this be agenda items only. You limit it to two minutes. Step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Good evening. Director Hashem, I just have a little request on current claims, number 44. It should say payable to DND Water and Sewer instead of Wade Trim. I think that was the typo.
Okay, so it's DND Sewer on 6-44?
Uh, 44.
Okay, got it. DND Sewer instead of Wade Trim. Everybody got that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We received an email.
Okay. Any other -- please step up to the podiums. Two minutes. Name and address, please.
(inaudible). Good evening. It's good to be at the city council again. I want to talk about the contract with the union. First, I want to say, anything which is not written in the contract, it doesn't exist. So, anything we talk about must be written and must be voted on. So, no confusion in the future about he said, she said, or anything else. Second, the four hours which are given to the employees. They work four days by eight thirty-two hours. They get paid thirty-six. I like to see it in the contract, what those four hours for. If they are for lunch, it must be clear in the contract that they are for lunch. Now, before you vote or approve the contract, you voted last November on account, not you, but previous city council. They voted on a contract which I believe the union did not approve. But, there is extension of benefit to employees, I believe, and all employees and public officials. I like you to rescind that vote before you vote on this one again. So, no confusion can happen that you voted on something if you decide not to extend them tonight for the elected officials. And I like actuary report, how much it's going to cost the residents if we extend the thirty percent and all these, you know, benefits. I believe it's going to be in the millions of dollars. I like some actuary report to be publicized before you vote on it, so everybody will know. What is it going to be, you know, the expense for the taxpayers? And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other -- go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I'm not sure if we're allowed to -- I know we can't comment back and forth, but I'd just like to make a generic comment in regards to that.
We can't comment unless you want to get up and speak as a resident.
Yeah. Well, actually, I want to ask our council, but I don't know if Gary here?
Yes, we can't interact. It's only--
No, no, not interact with the resident. No, 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 no. I'd just like to ask a question in regards to what the resident was asking.
We'll have to -- we can have that during the discussion.
We can address when we get to that portion of the --
Okay.
Okay, any other public hearing and comment on agenda items? Okay. Next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance.
I move that fund transfers and current claims, number 61 through 651, I think. 651 be approved.
Okay.
Second.
That is second by Councilman Abdella. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Chair. They were first.
Councilman Muscat.
I have a few that I'd like to bring up. The first one is 63 from American Hydraulics. It just tells me that hydraulic motors and swing cylinders, but I don't know what they're used for.
Okay, that's DPW.
And being charged to Water Department.
Mr. Blackburn.
That is a Ward Department account. The motors were for sweepers. When the mechanics write up the work orders, they would get charged to Highway Department. The cylinder for the swing arm, that's for the Ward Department backhoe.
Okay. And I think you better not go yet. Another one, sir, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
The Munn Tractor and Law, along incorporated, what did these go on? I mean, again, it's another Water Department and--
Those were the pads for the stabilizers for the Ward Department backhoe.
Okay, that's easy. And then, I have another one on 642 to our Police Department. This is for repair, an exhaust fan repair. And was this under a service contract? Because I see contractual services here.
Yes, that was all part of the Sistemp's issue with the motors. How many fans did we end up replacing? You don't know?
I guess my concern is, is we've got contractual services. And I understand we're going to pay something, like parts. But, I don't understand, when you got a contracts, a contractual service and service agreements, why are we still paying? And I brought this up before. Why are we paying for labor? What's a service contract worth if we've got to pay for everything? Service contract, you're either going to get parts or labor, one of the two. Usually not both at the same time. You get a discount on parts and free labor, but, I mean, we're paying for everything. So, I don't understand what a service contract is good for in this case. And I'm not going to deny payment, believe me. I'm just asking the question. The work has been done and it needed to be done. But, in the future, when we get contracts, service contracts, we've got to be stated exactly what we're getting to the T. I'll be looking at them very carefully in the near future. But, I was just, food for information, that's all.
All right, thank you.
And then--
She's got it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. When you're looking at it and it says contracted services, that is just the general ledger account numbered name for it?
Okay.
So, what goes into those accounts, and they're all over all of the funds, is any time that we pay someone for a service. So, it's like a third party. If we don't do it in-house, anything, it could be the attorneys, it could be the auditors, and it doesn't necessarily mean we have a service contract with them. It's just a third-party provider and they go in that line.
That's also good information, and I thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Another one at 6-50, the traffic signal maintenance. We just paid this a few weeks ago. And I'm noticing Cherry Hill and Inkster and Cherry Hill and John Daly. If we paid for that, we should be getting our money back. And I see Cherry Hill and Inkster on here. And Cherry Hill and John Daly, all gone. I said that before, the shields are off the lights. And we're paying for that, and they said they just fixed them. What did they fix?
Okay. That is DPW.
So, that's just another thing, is we got to be careful what we do and how we go about paying these and not knowing if the work has actually really been done.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Bazey.
Okay, from the last meeting we had, we discussed lawn being cut, but other than DPW. I still have an issue with that one because of the grievances that we've seen in the past, even on these invoices, there was grievance, a couple of them. And also, for the sewer cleaning, for some reason, the price is going up. But, we still have issues with sewers backing up. Now, it's almost $39,000 from 11-1.
What number exactly?
This one is 630.
Nagel, please.
Nagel. It's $38,763. And from the previous meeting we had, we were told that DPW can do cleaning just as good. I don't know why DPW is not doing this. So, again, I'm not going to approve these invoices.
I believe the reason why DPW doesn't do all of these is because this is an ongoing service that gets done on a, I don't know, it's probably a daily basis because they got to go through the whole city. But, I am agreeing with you that it does get out of hand doing the same ones over and over.
Well, also, I mean, who's inspecting the work? Why is their vehicle parked in our DPW? Why is their employees working out of DPW? It doesn't make sense. It sounds shady to me. That's it. But, I'm still not approving it.
Mr. Blackburn, would you like to answer that?
For the $38,000, there's two invoices. Apparently, the first one didn't make it in time for the last council agenda. That's probably why it's so much this time. And the reason why we have the contractor is every sewer in the city has to be shot once every five years. The city's split up into five areas. Every year, they're in a different area cleaning the sanitary sewers in those areas. And it's too much work for us to take on with the employees and stuff that we have.
Okay.
We were told, okay, some sewers that we would discuss in the last few meetings back, there were sewers cleaned in an area that we just found out earlier today that there was an issue with one of the homes. So, it doesn't make sense to me. I don't know who's inspecting the work, that this work's being done. We've asked that day in and day out, that we need to have somebody inspected, take pictures of before and after. That was never presented. And again, I still have a problem. This is the city of Dearborn Heights, not contractors living under our roof, operating under our roof, and we're paying them. It doesn't make sense. Because we're treating that company as DPW, but they're not. And we're paying them all this money. So, again, to me, it doesn't make sense. It doesn't sound--
Yeah, I guess the question is, is that we understand that they are storing their equipment in our city-owned buildings.
And employees work there, too.
Can I answer the reason why?
Sure.
By having them located in the city, we are not paying a fee for them moving those trucks from their installation to the city. We would lose one hour in return time. This way, they're able to come in and immediately start. That's what I was told.
Okay.
This is an international company. In our SWIPPY, which I don't remember what the acronym sounds for, but we entered into an agreement with the DEQ that we would clean all sewers on a five-year rotational basis. We do not have the manpower and staff and machinery to do that. This was set up years ago, and we're going out for bids again. But, this is an international company.
Right, and that's understandable.
It's not some local outfit that any of us, I mean, whether they have Dearborn Heights businesses or not, it's not going to make a difference.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Nagel is based out of Moline, Michigan. I think that's in the United States. I think here, it's in Michigan. And Pipeline, who's doing the cleaning, they're based out of--
Wayland, I think.
Moline, Michigan.
They're Moline, yes.
So, they're both, it says here on the invoices, Moline, Michigan. That's in the United States. That's in Michigan. So, it doesn't say they're international.
Well, they're a subsidiary of an--
But, it doesn't matter. I mean, when we put out for bids, we don't put a bid out for overseas contractors to do the work.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
For Mr. Blackburn, you mentioned that there was a, this is tagging on to this, with the amount being higher, because it is quite a bit higher. And you mentioned that there was an invoice that was back from the previous meeting, 10-10. But, there was also another invoice on the previous meeting. So, based on that theory, then that would make the previous meeting's invoice, if we include this one with the last meeting, quite a bit high, honestly. So, is there a reason as to why? Because if we take the invoice from 10-10 that you're mentioning, 10-10-18, which is invoice number 15657, and we add that to the last meeting, which I don't know what that number was, but off the top of my head, and don't quote me, I remember a figure of 19,000 or 20,000, somewhere around there. So, if we take this amount here from 10-10 and add it to the 19-19, which we approved back then, then that would make it, give or take, whatever the number happens to be, 35,000, 38,000, or 40,000. Because I don't have the other number directly in front of me. So, based on that, then that would make the last meeting's invoice, if we include this one with it, you know, possibly too high, which would raise, you know, a red flag. So, is there a reason, tagging on to Councilman Bazey's question, was there a reason as to why it's so much higher than normal?
Um--
I don't know if I made sense what I just asked you.
No, I don't have a, I would have to look into that as to why.
Because it's always been in the 15,000 to 20,000 range. And then, if we add this invoice to the last invoice, then that would make it back to what we have in front of us here, which is 38,763. It would take it back to be in the mid-30s someplace, possibly, based on my recollection.
We'll take a look at it and get--
Yeah.
--if we know the answer.
No, I don't know the answer right offhand without going back through my records.
Okay.
Council Chair.
Lynn does. I had other questions.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
No, she's got a--
It could be that we're getting two on this list of bills, because this was a three-week period of payment where maybe the next one, it's going to--
Yeah, we had extra--
--not have it because we just happened to grab two this time.
Yep.
But, we will look into it.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Want to, just a quick comment here about this whole thing, Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I think what the council people are looking for is, you know, how are these being inspected when they get done because of the amount they're going over doing the same ones over and over again? And I believe in, don't, I can't say it for 100% certainty, but I was looking at the contract that is, and they did have something said, they camera them. And if they're not camera, they should camera them before and after, so we could actually see the type of work that's getting done, especially in the areas that we're having much difficulty with. That, to me, would make a lot of sense. You keep going to the same one, week in and week out, those should be camered before and after. So, that way, we know that the complete blockage was taken out. And I guess that's what it is in a nutshell, that what we were complaining about. And when I discovered this a couple of years ago, it was hard to see it because everything was handwritten. And then, we had them printed out, and you were able to compare apples and apples. So, I guess that's been my complaint. And I hate to speak for somebody else, but I think that's a lot of the complaint going on, too, here. So, that's just my comment on this.
Councilman Wenzel.
I had a couple things for Blackburn. You said the city's divided into five sections, and each year, they do a section?
Yes.
Do they do every sanitary sewer in that section in a year?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've heard that they were doing some twice. Is that like from five years ago, they're doing it twice, or they have to do it twice?
No, there are some problem areas, usually lines that have restaurants on them, get greasy buildup. Those are done. There's 16 of them that are really bad, that we do every other week just to keep up on them to not have a blockage. Because what they mainly do is sewer maintenance. They clean the sewers. They're not doing a lot of blockages. They're just doing sewer maintenance to prevent blockages, for the most part.
Okay. Another thing is, just so you understand, when something's clogged or it's got an obstruction, you blast it out with high-pressure water, is that right?
Yes.
And where does that stuff go? Does it go further on down the line, or where does it go?
It goes further on down the line, and then we pull it to a bigger line, so it doesn't clog up somewhere else, either.
So, you never actually extract it? It just goes, keeps going down the line?
It's water treatment.
Yeah, it keeps on going down the line where it dumps into Wayne County sewers.
Don't they have like a clean-out, like a manhole where stuff dumps into it, and you clean out the bottom of it or something that falls into it, or anything like that?
No, because with the volume of water that we use, it just shoots it right on down the line, then we continue it on down the line to a bigger pipe where it won't clog it up.
That's Alan Park's problem, then.
Yeah.
Well, Madam Chair.
I got Councilman Abdella here.
Mine is in regards to something else.
Oh.
No, it's actually, it's the same question. I mean, you brought up, I mean, it's more questions now. You said that every five years, you move on to somewhere else. So, now, with these two invoices, the map has the same sewers. So, when you guys move on to somewhere else, what happened to the same sewers that you're cleaning now? Do you let those clog for another five years?
No, we don't let those clog. The minimum we have to clean them by the law is once every five years.
But, I understand, but why are you cleaning them two weeks? There's two weeks in a row, you're cleaning the same sewers. You have an invoice here for October, end of, mid-October, you have one November 1st, the same sewers, the same maps, the same location.
There are some--
So, it's not every five years.
There are some couple lines we clean every other week to prevent blockages. It's just general sewer maintenance in some, a couple areas just need more maintenance than others.
Okay. Councilman Abdella.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions. First one's in regards to 639. And this one was for our Council Gary. One of the charges that you had in here was--
639.
For 639, this would be on page five of the charges. And if there's a confidentiality thing, Gary, then just let me know. But, I assume I could pronounce the name. Is that okay?
Um--
It's on the website.
On public, yeah, so I can, yes, correct. So, there's a, some hours, multiple hours that were put in for Nabeel Fakhi. So, a question I've got for you, because it says there's a lawsuit here regarding Fakhi versus Dearborn Heights. Is this in regards to the CAP program? Is there something we should be aware of, or is there a confidentiality?
Actually, Mr. Roberts happens to be here, and maybe he could address this. This looks like a tax tribunal type of thing, though, because it has--
Mr. Roberts, would you like to speak on that?
Right here, page five, right in the center.
It wasn't settled, we talked about it before.
It's page five. Nabeel Fakhi.
And this is from Dirk Beckerle of our office, and he is primarily tax tribunal matters.
Okay, so it's not a CAP program situation. The reason I was asking, because there was an issue with the CAP program where one home was given back, and I was concerned about us paying more and more legal fees on something that's completely done. So, okay, is that--
(inaudible).
I got you. Okay, that answers it. And then, I had another question on item 647. And this would be-- for the tennis courts. I believe that's Gribble. Ken Gribble, I know he's retired, but I'm not sure that--
Do we have anybody taking over for Kim?
Can't be able to answer.
Can you answer that?
On the Swapka Tennis Courts improvements? Okay.
Was this not the same one where we have an agenda item later? Or is that a different tennis part?
I believe that that's the Swapka part.
That's the Swapka parks, it says here.
Different one.
It's a different one.
See? Okay, we're good, then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, any other questions, concerns? At this point, where are we?
7A.
Okay. At this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
I have Councilman Bazey opposed. The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is consideration of bids. Community and Economic Development Director Hashem, request for bids FY 2015 CDBG Good Neighbor Program Demolition Project.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move the city council authorize a community and economic development department to prepare specifications and request bid for year 2015 CDBG Good Neighbor Program, 2611 Powers, 26166 Powers, 24759 Hopkins Demolition Project. The CEDD office will be seeking bids for a qualified contractor to perform the demolitions at 26115 Powers, 26166 Powers, and 24759 Hopkins, as outlined in 7A. I hope I got all that right.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Constance. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I spoke with CDBG Director Joe Hashem in regards to this, and he mentioned that he was not the one that was specifically involved with this. I understand it was Jack. So, I just had a quick question for Jack. Are these properties were basically condemned by the city? Because he mentioned that we've owned them for a while, so I suppose--
Yeah, we purchased, the first one we purchased was 26115 Powers. They had been vacant for about, our best guess is about 15 years. It was beyond repair, 261--
The taxes were being paid on it, then?
Pardon me?
The taxes were being paid, so it didn't go to foreclosure or nothing, right?
Yeah, well, eventually, we bought them through first right of refusal, so--
So, these are properties that had way too much work for somebody to be able to take them on in the CAP program, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that clears it up, then.
In particular, the one on Hopkins is getting broken into a lot. It's become quite a nuisance for the community, so--
Okay. Thank you, Jack.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have Park and Recreation Director Gribble, bid tabulations for Swapka Park Tennis Court Replacement Project.
Madam Chair.
Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that city council concur with former, I guess he's former director, Kenneth Gribble, or now, we can say the Recreation Department, on actually moving this to the springtime for rebid and return all the bid bonds to all the bidders, as outlined in 7B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Constance. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
I had a question for the Recreation Department. Kim Constance, please, if you don't mind. I took the amount that he had said that had been allocated, which was 120,969, and of which, 70,969 was coming from the County Park Millage Lotma, and 50,000 budgeted in Parks and Recreation, capital outlay budget. But, then he mentions in here, the former director, that we need to allocate an additional 65,501. When I added the 120,969 to the 65,501, I was trying to understand where he came up with the amount, because that came out to 186,470, which was not a part of any of these bids. So, I was wondering where he came up with the amount of 65,501 from.
You know what? I'd have to look into that, because actually, this is the first time I've seen this. I was not given this one pen last-- I was not given this one pen last.
It's the way trim engineering costs that can include it.
Okay, because it didn't. Okay, so $65,501 goes to engineering?
No.
No.
What's the difference?
What's the difference is?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
So I understand here, I mean, there were some few recommendations, but it says that we would postpone this till spring of 2019. Are they going to rebid on the same work in the spring, different companies?
Would you want to answer that?
Yeah, we'll probably restructure the bid so that we can maybe split it in two parts and have an additive alternate depending on the pricing. And I think we're going to just set up the bid a little differently to try to save some money.
Madam Chair.
Have discussions with the contractors.
Okay, so when you send it out for rebid, you won't necessarily send it to the three companies listed here, right?
It's open bidding.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Abella.
So I'd just like to go back to my earlier statement I was asking Kim on item number 647. It is for the same park, they're both Swapka Park.
I said I thought it was Swapka Park.
Right, so no, what I'm saying is like, why are we spending money on, you know, $2,631 on something that we're going to be replacing?
You know what, like I said, this is the first time I've seen any of these documents tonight.
The controller, I think.
That's the engineering for the bids. The engineering cost to compare the bids and receive the bids.
Okay.
And Lynda has something to add, I think.
It was the same.
Oh, okay, okay, great. No problem.
Okay. Just want to make sure we're not spending money on something that we're going to be replacing. Thank you.
Councilman Wensel.
Has there been any work done already and have we paid anybody to do any work on the tennis courts?
No.
What about, I noticed all the fencing's torn down. Who tore the fencing down?
I think I remember that being part of the project.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
DPW took the fencing down because there was a big problem with the vines. And there's talk of doing just the one tennis court, the front tennis court and doing the back tennis court later. And we're getting Wayne County Park Village money back to do some of the work. But I guess doing a tennis court, doing the base of the tennis court is very expensive.
Are they doing four courts or just two?
We probably can't afford four. That was why we would look and rebid in two phases, so probably do half and half.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, recommendation of award, Richard A. Young Recreation Center Rooftop HVAC Unit.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella.
I move that we concur with DPW Director William Zimmer attaching the review, the bid tabulation to replace one rooftop HVAC unit at the Richard A. Young, I'm sorry, Recreation Center with a York 7.5 ton RTU. The Department of Public Works is recommending this project be awarded to Johnson Controls of Ann Arbor with a low bid of $12,498 with payment upon satisfactory completion as outlined in item 7C.
Okay.
Second.
Supported by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Okay, so Johnson's Control has a bid of $12,498. So the next one up is $15,400. I mean, that's a big difference in price. I just hope that this company doesn't come back and say, hey, we underbid this. And Councilman Muscat brought that up earlier with the same company. They come back and they charge us money for additional work. So is there a warranty on this particular unit?
Mr. Blackburn?
I'm going to assume that the difference in the bids are what the companies had to use to get the unit on the roof because it's not easy billing to access. Johnson Controls is held to the price at the wing bid. There won't be no adjustments to the wing bid. And it comes with its standard one-year parts, one-year labor on that.
All right, thank you very much. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Service Administrator Zimmer, recommendation of award for Caroline Kennedy Library Two Compressor Units.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
I move we concur with our DPW Director Bill Zimmer and approve the low bid of $13,248 for the, to replace two compressors at the Caroline Kennedy Library and with payment upon satisfactory completion as outlined in 7B. Support.
Supported by Councilman Abella, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under reports from Mayor, we have Warren Valley Golf Course update.
It's just received information.
I move that we receive note and file on this.
Okay.
And, Madam Chair.
Councilman Constant.
So did I just, Mayor, hear you say that we're not going to use Plant, Moran, Cresca but somebody else?
Yes, and if, did you get a second then I'll talk on it.
Second.
Second by Councilman Abella.
And because a lot of residents are concerned. One of the items that I've directed our Corporation Council, Mr. Gary Miatki, to work with Mr. Jack Smiley of the Southeastern Michigan Land Conservancy on restricting further use of the golf course. So he is working on that. And then originally, I was going to recommend Cresca assist us in coming up with a plan for the golf course, but they have suggested a couple other people and we'll interview them as Council Mayor. And so we don't really have a, we're going to keep it as a golf course and a banquet center, but we would like to have some expertise in looking how we can better operate the facility. So that'll come in the future.
Okay, great.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
We'd like to see whoever comes in as a consultant, if we're going to pay them, like to see their credentials. That's one of the things, if they can bring in their credentials for the next meeting.
You're going to interview them and I, to enter into the agreement of a majority, have to approve it. So certainly, any questions you have?
Well, it'd be nice if they can send it ahead of time before they come, if they can put in agenda their resume or their credentials.
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? So we've got a receipt note and file. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We receive note and file. Next, we have Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association, TPOAM, 2016 to 2021 Contract and Two Memorandums of Understanding, also known as MOU.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abella.
I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Paletko with the attached final agreement between the City of Dearborn Heights and the Dearborn Heights Public Employees Association, TPOAM, for the years 2016 through 2021. In addition, there's two memorandums of understanding attached and the mayor is recommending that the City Council approve the contract and the two memor, I'm sorry, memorandums of understanding. And his suggestions, these can be adopted separately or together, whichever is preferred, as outlined in item 8B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Constant, is there any discussion?
Council Chair.
Council Chair. If I may, you should also include in the motion authorization for the mayor and city clerk.
I'm sorry, correct. Also included in my motion is authorization for the mayor and the city clerk to sign the contract and MOUs.
Okay, Councilman Muscat.
You know, I hate to bring this up, it's been 11 months since we've been dealing with this contract. And I know everybody is very, very anxious to get something finally signed, sealed, and delivered. But as I went through this, and I went through this this time pretty closely, and on page 35 of this is where a percentage of increase of pay equivalent to 30% of base wages to go back to work for five days. Now, for a long time, we've been talking about returning this city to work five days. Now, I don't know if anyone in good conscience could award anyone 30% raise for four hours' pay. That, to me, is just unreasonable at best. I don't know who put this in. If the union side put it in, that's great. That's something that the administration needed to either omit, negotiate with, and lower. If the administration put it in, it just shows me that there's no, no way that they want to even go back to a five-day work week. Citizens of this city deserve five days a week. We keep talking about spending money with outside contractors doing work. We spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, sometimes every other week of $9,000, $10,000, $11,000, $12,000 to cut grass. Look how many man-hours we lose being closed on Friday. Even though they come to work on Friday, part of it is standard time, part of it is premium time. And then on Saturdays and Sundays, we lose man-hours. And as a person who did some type of hourly management in a, in a setting for a large corporation, I know when I had people missing for a day, I couldn't continue to keep my job up. It's just, there's no way. So having a day that shut down is, it's unfathomable that we close a city for one day and then we put in a contract that we're going to pay somebody 30% more for four hours' worth of work. Where, who fell asleep at the negotiation table? 30%? Can anybody even imagine getting a 30% raise for four hours?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
I will respond to that. This was not put in by the administration and as you know, this was a very tedious negotiation process. To go to a fifth day, we would, at that point, enter in and reopen the agreement to a more realistic number, but we could not, we didn't want to hold the entire contract up for that one item. And that's what would happen.
I understand, but I look back at the other one. You know, I don't, I don't have a staff of people looking at stuff like this. I got to count on myself to read all through these pages and comprehend every single word of a legal document. I don't have a staff like Detroit does for their city council people. And I come here and I listen in good faith to what's being told to us about contract negotiations. And every time we've had a update on contract negotiations, all we get is the other side is not negotiating in good faith. I don't sit in those negotiations. I don't know what goes on in those negotiations. Again, I'm taking everything at good faith. If it's in this contract and it's in here written, I can guarantee you they'll hold you to the 30%. You take this in front of any judge and I'm willing to bet, hey, you agreed to it, all of you agreed to it. 30%. I can't even imagine a professional negotiator wouldn't have brought that down. It's, to me, it's irresponsible. And it's been thrown at us on more than one occasion of being irresponsible. I can't go tell my city residents that, hey, we're going to pay people 30% more to work for four more hours, to get paid for four more hours. That's ludicrous and it's crazy.
Councilman, that language has been in there for, what would we say, 18 months?
Correct.
Four months, and you never said anything before today.
Like I said, I don't have a staff of people going through this and I don't sit in negotiations. We've asked to sit in these negotiations. You said no, absolutely not. And I don't know if there's a law, a state law, that says that we can't.
Well, actually, you did sit on the negotiations on the union side.
I just, I didn't sit on a negotiation, I just sat with them. I wasn't in on any negotiation, sir.
You sat with them.
I sat with them, correct. I was not in any negotiation. When the two parties meet and are discussing what they want and what they don't want, okay? You tell us we can't do that. And I don't believe there's a state law that says I can't. And yet you're telling me that I have to take you on good faith. And I took it on good faith for a long time until I start reading everything. Now I've read it and I look at 30% and I think that's just unexcusable.
Well, you should have read it 18 months ago. You were irresponsible for not reading it.
Okay, okay.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
At this point, let's just, come on, come on. All right, at this point, let's move on.
I'm being irresponsible, but hang on a second, please. I like to comment on my being irresponsible. You're being irresponsible for hiring people or not hiring people that a professional negotiator for 30% and you did nothing about it. You tell me who's irresponsible on that, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order is correct.
Today is National Kindness Day, let's keep it civil.
I'm trying to be civil, but you're the one that started with irresponsible.
Okay, at this point, we're going to move on with the discussion. Anybody else? Councilman Wensel.
When I was running for city council, that's one of the things I told the voters that I would fight for a five-day work week. And with this in the contract, like Mr. Muscat said, there's no way that we're going to, the city will approve 30% raise for a five-day work week. So on that basis alone, I will not accept this contract the way it's written with that in there.
Councilman Abella.
I also, you know, as much as I want to get this thing done, but I have a very, very serious problem, honestly, Mr. Mayor, we're not going to be going to a five-day work week. That's something that from day one I've been a proponent of, for us to open up five days or possibly, again, I'm not a part of negotiations either, or possibly, obviously, less pay because it's four days, one or the other, but preferably for residents to get five-day work week. And with a 30% base increase, there's just, there's just no way it makes sense for us as a city to open up on that fifth day with that 30%. So it, to me, this is set up to fail, honestly. Especially, it failed specifically in terms of opening up that fifth day, which is very important to myself and the residents.
Well, if I can call on Beth or Gary Miatki, who both said in negotiations, this would have been a deal breaker.
I personally was not involved in dealing with this particularly.
Beth, would you like to speak on that? You can step up to the podium here if you'd like. Be easier for our camera guy.
Good evening. This, as you know, is a very long, hard-fought-out contract negotiation. And this was one item put in by the union and they did, they have had, they did have much lower wages over the past five or six years. So those were things that we were considering because they had the lowest wages throughout the entire city. So I can't say much more than that about it.
But, I mean, an option would have been to pay fair wages, which I'm a proponent of, or even a little better than fair, I have no problem with that. But a 30% raise, I mean, look, I can see, with all due respect to the union workers, I mean, I could see if I was a union worker, honestly, I'd love it to just stay working four and a half days and, you know, it's good for me. I mean, I could see why they would want it. So I have no problem on their end why they were fighting for that because that's what they should do. I have no problem with that. But I'm saying on our end, on the city's end, why this was accepted or not negotiated to like hypothetically, 5%, 2%, 6%, 30% is a high, high, high increase, which puts it as a barrier to be able to move forward. Because there's just no way, look, from day one, excuse me, from day one, I've been, again, a proponent of the fifth work week. And I was told multiple times that this is not something that we could vote on. We, as a council, way back when, I'm talking about, I don't have the dates in front of me, a year and a half, two, maybe three years ago, that we couldn't until we have the contract negotiations again. And now that we've had the contract negotiations again, it's back to where basically there's a barrier that has been put up that can't be crossed. If we crossed it, we'd be irresponsible ourselves as council members to say, you know what? We're going to open up that fifth day, let's give them 30%. Now we're not doing our fiduciary duty to our residents, giving up 30% pay raise for an extra, because, you know, for the four hours. Then we're not doing our job as council members looking out for the residents. And then to keep it the other way, well, then now we're only open four days a week. Again, I'm somewhat okay with opening up four days a week if it was at a much lesser pay. But to still get paid well, okay, or fair, whatever, I don't know the exact dollar figures, and put up this type of a barrier is, I just think, honestly, if I can be blunt, not good negotiations with all due respect.
I cannot speak to the five-day work week that I came up with.
The five-day work week was, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of all of our council members, but I've heard, at least, I'll just say at least a good part of them, I assume maybe all of them, I don't want to take a vote right now, have wanted this five-day work week. Residents have complained about this five-day work week. And all along, we've been told that we can't do this until the contracts come up, until the contracts come up. Well, when the contracts came up, not only was it not a part of the negotiations, at least I don't believe or I haven't heard it, but we put up a barrier that could never be crossed. 30% is a large amount. And again, for the union workers, with due respect to them, I get it. Because if I'm a union president or a union worker, I mean, I would want the same. Who doesn't want to work four days a week? It's great, I get it. But same with the department heads, I know I'm told some department heads come in, but the reality is, everybody's working four days, maybe a couple hours out of the home. Reality is, everybody's working four days. So with that being the case, putting up this type of a barrier, personally, I'm against it.
Council Chair.
If I may, if there's not sufficient support with respect to this, then perhaps there are two things that should be done. I refer the matter back to the administration. And in addition to that, schedule up a closed session so that the negotiators may have direction from the council about what the council believes to be an appropriate way to end up approaching this particular.
I mean, I could live with 10%. I mean, four hours.
But, Councilman, it probably would not be advisable to discuss what would end up being.
I think we should move into a closed session.
Let's move into a closed study session. Let's, let's move it to a closed study session at this point.
Close session.
Close session. Go ahead.
So, Councilor Chair, earlier in the meeting, uh, one of the residents brought up, um, a very good point in regards to rescinding our last vote. And I know you guys said I couldn't speak about it then, but I, I'd like to ask our council, Gary, um, Miyati, I mean, it seems like the right thing to do. So do you agree with that proposition? Because I, I, I think it's a good idea to go ahead and rescind our last vote, where we approved the contract and later on, obviously, you know, it went away.
Well, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. My sense is, is that there is an approval of a contract and there is an extension of certain things to the non-union workers based on that. Now, what you would end up doing with a rescission vote, it's kind of unclear if you're saying that you're going to rescind it all the way back or say that it's no longer in effect, which raises contractual issues with respect to the city already having an obligation to pay. Whether or not that would be prospective also raises issues about whether or not those individuals were expecting that they would continue to end up receiving this pay and might cause more problems, uh, with respect to the individuals who are already receiving, uh, those monies.
So are you able, with council's approval, obviously, to put something in writing that would clarify that? Because I, I, you know, think, again, I'm not an attorney or a lawyer, but I do deal with contracts. I can definitely see that point, and I didn't think of it. And I could definitely see that point where somebody can come back and say, you approved it way back when and never rescinded that particular approval. So we could do an amendment, yeah, we approved certain things but not everything, clarifying it.
Right. I, I think what would probably be appropriate is when you end up having a motion with regard to the prior contract, which had been approved, would be to basically end up saying that-
This will precede.
This will precede that motion.
Okay.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay, that would rescind it.
Right. And we can work on the specific wording.
That's what I'm saying.
Sounds like, sounds like right now, we need to end up working on the contract.
Right. But I wanted to bring up that point, because I thought it was a good point.
Okay, at this point, are we gonna move it to a-
Well, there was a motion to vote on it, so I think whoever made that motion-
There's a motion and support, yeah.
Right, so we'll vote on the motion.
Unless someone wants to amend the motion to move it to a closed session.
You could just make a motion to refer. It's always an order, um, and, uh, refer to the administration. And then also, the council chair would have the authority to schedule up a closed session and, uh, direct people from the administration to be present. I would have to note, though, that Ms. Ray O'Donnell is returning, uh, back to, uh, the city of Southfield, where she will now be the city attorney.
Correct.
And so she will no longer be in a position to, uh, represent us with respect to this matter, so.
So, um, there is another individual in my office, though, who's very aware, and we work as a team, that would be Ms. Bartosz.
Sue Bartosz?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adella?
I move that we move this contract, um, to a closed session to be determined by you at a later date.
Do you have, refer back to the administration?
Refer back to the administration.
Refer back to the administration.
Sure. We'll do this as soon as possible, too.
Yes.
Probably next week, maybe. Let's try it.
Take whatever most important.
Okay. All those, um, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Councilman Conson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We will be moving that to a closed study session soon, hopefully next week. Next item on the agenda, I guess, doesn't even, it's moved with E and C.
No, not this one.
Well, in initial-
They piggyback on each other.
Well, in initial proposal, uh, the mayor had put in, um, uh, one or the other. Here we go. It says you can adopt them separately or together, whichever you prefer. So, Council Gary Miyati, should I amend my motion to include both items, eight B and eight C? Would that suffice?
I think that would be wise.
Because it says either or in the con-
That would be the appropriate thing.
Okay, so I amend my motion to include-
Or you could just make, you could just refer this item as well right now without amending your motion, which might make it easier on the clerk's office.
All right, then I refer this item, item eight C, to also be included in a, a future closed session as appointed by the council chairwoman. That suffice?
Do we vote on it?
Chair, I think it would be my motion to refer this back to administration.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, then you'll have a closed session.
And then we can have a closed session after vote. And that would be my motion.
Okay.
If I get a second.
I second.
Second, Councilman Adella. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Also, next we have report from city officials. We have Human Resource Director Sabota Perry, 6055 and 6056, reporting assistance.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move that council concur with Mayor Dan Pletko, uh, in a city approval to further retain Plant Moran Group benefit advisors, and to sublease with HCM file to implement reporting provisions, uh, that the city of Dearborn Heights has under the Affordable Care Act as outlined in 9A.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have ordinances and resolutions. Mark S. Roberts, Seacrest Wardell, proposed zoning ordinance amendment H-18-08, C-3 district, automobile and vehicle dealership separation requirements.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adella.
I'd like to move that we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko, uh, with the attached item, finding a copy of an ordinance amendment to amend the zoning ordinance regulations regarding C-3 district, specifically Section 36-162. Automobile and vehicle dealerships, um, is proposed to be amended to exclude from the separation requirements those automobile dealerships not located within the borders of the city of Dearborn Heights. The amended language is found as the underlined portion of subsection seven, contained in the attached proposed ordinance amendment as outlined in item 11A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conson. Um, Miyaki?
Yes, um, my recommendation would be consider this to be read for the first time.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Conson.
So, this is, I think, a good idea. So, for example, on Van Born, so you have all kinds of, uh, auto sales businesses on the tailor's side. We don't want to say, oh, you can't have a-
It's a thousand, thousand-feet condition.
Yeah, so I think that's a good idea.
Where this came up, if I might, is actually on Warren Avenue, near Garland. And there is a business there, and he cannot put a used car lot, because on the Detroit side, there's a used car lot. So this was not really foreseen when the original ordinance, I think, was put together. So, Mr. Roberts, I, uh, I don't know what happened to the gentleman. He was here, there he is. So, um, he brought it to my attention. We had to get it done, and-
The ordinance as drafted, as, as originally in place, provided a separation requirement, which would go across city lines. I think the intent behind the ordinance originally was the uses in the city should be separated out. Um, and because the zoning ordinance incorporated uses across city lines, it had an impact on, um, the actual implementation. It wasn't intended. So this is just a correction to reverse that. And as, uh, Councilman, Conson indicated, it's a situation where, you know, you've got uses, for instance, across Van Born or across the city line that, um, would impact whether a, a use could be entertained at a given location.
Thank you. Councilman Adella?
Based, based on that theory, then, should we, I'm not saying we should, I'm just asking, change this for other types of businesses that also have ordinances in place? Now, I'm, I'm speaking for, hypothetically, future purposes, like, for example, with dispensaries, you know, not in the past, marijuana dispensaries. Would that have the same type of regulations, same type of ord-, would we, uh, write our ordinances in the same direction as this? Is this gonna set a precedent now, or are we automatically gonna do it like this? Because this only applies to automobile dealerships, but obviously, it could come back for other items.
And that is something that the Planning Commission addresses when they do the public hearing on these. Uh, you take the, um, input from the Planning Commission, they did make a recommendation after a public hearing on this, and recommended adoption of this particular arrangement for this particular use. Uh, there may be situations where maybe you don't want that. Um, so I, I think it's, it's best handled, because these are zoning ordinances. Uh, the Planning Commission first does a review of them, and it's that type of review that addresses that type of concern. And then the recommendation is made to you, and then you make the ultimate decision.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
Um, the ordinance that's in effect right now for, in, within the city, what's the, uh, what's the space between them that's allowed?
For automobile?
Yeah.
It's, I believe it's a thousand feet.
Thousand feet.
The separation, uh, is not changing. It's just to exclude, uh, the uses outside of the city borders.
All right, thanks.
Okay, any further discussion?
Chair, I think we have to make him, amend the motion to include this as a first reading.
I'd like to amend and revise my motion to include, uh, item 11A as a first reading.
Second.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Any other discussion?
Just one item for the applicant out in the audience. I incorrectly said you could come in tomorrow. It's gotta have a second reading. So in two weeks, when it's approved on the 27th, then you can come in on the 28th. Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have new business, business license renewal for West Financial Auto Group located at 5952 Telegraph Road.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Adella?
I move that we approve the renewal for the business license for West Financial Auto Group at, located at 5952 Telegraph Road. Uh, at this present time, uh, all, he's current on everything as far as personal property taxes, water, and therefore, the license is renewable per the clerk as outlined in item 13A.
Select support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from city council members at the table.
Madam Chair.
Councilman, um, Council, Councilman Wenzel?
Okay. Um, a couple Saturdays ago, we had their, uh, watershed steward commission, tri-annual, annual, um, rain garden maintenance program at the, at the Richard A. Young Center. We had a fantastic turnout. We had, uh, about 30, 35 students from Crestwood High School and a few from Annapolis High School. Uh, myself and Councilman Constance were there. Um, I'd like to give a special shout-out and a big thanks to, uh, Artistic Landscape Service, who donated, uh, several hours of their volunteer time to, uh, help us out, do some edging on it with their heavy machinery that they had. They did a fantastic job. The owner was really great, great guy. Got to meet him. And, um, I had a question for the, uh, the building, building maintenance, uh, is, uh, is that you, uh, Mr. Blackburn? Um, the parking lot at the Richard A. Young Center is a special kind of parking lot. It's an imperbial parking lot, I believe, or-
Forest parking lot.
And, uh, the rainwater goes right through the parking lot. Now, that's been in, uh, Mr. Brooks, how long's that been in there?
Like, four years, five years?
Four or five years. Is there, is there a maintenance schedule for that, to keep that clean somehow, so it doesn't clog up? Because seeing, I was there, I was looking around, it seemed like it's kind of getting dirt building up inside of it.
I'll give you just sweep the park, park lot, just to break it up.
Has it been swept ever?
It has been swept.
Has it been swept?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other? Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I got a few things. First one is the, I'm gonna bring it up again. The light poles, or the streetlights, are the DTE poles and/or cable lines. The one at Amboy and Wilson that was down last April during an ice storm is still there, tied up to the new pole with a rope, and it still has DTE equipment hanging on it. The other one is at, um, John Daly and, um, Wilson, that's leaning at 22 to 25 degrees. I, I measured it before and I, I forget which number it is. And, and the cable companies have been going through there and recabling a few things, and these lines are sagging so low. It's, you know, you go down John Daly, and I'm sure it's throughout the whole city, and I apologize to the rest of the city that I'm not bringing up your neighborhoods, but it's the area that I drive all the time, uh, back and forth to relatives' homes or to the store. So I see this every day. And it's, it, it's very disturbing that I see these things sagging the way they are. And the one pole that's leaning at 20-some degrees is pulling the other pole across the street into the same direction. Now, I did send an email to our emergency manager, because I didn't know else to turn to, and, um, I was told it wasn't really that department's positioned to do anything, that DPW has to put in some work requests. Now, that's the first I've heard it, as many times as I've brought this up to light. But we've gotta be able to do something about this. Uh, and I'm not, you know, saying it's the emergency manager's problem. I mean, she says it's not her realm, that's great. I appreciate that. But we gotta be able to find out what to do with this. And all those sagging cable lines, those are brand new. And it, and it just makes the neighborhood look horrible. Plus, I'm afraid that they're gonna come down. And then, then recently, in the last month or so, I reported a pole at Beach Daly and Joy Road on the, uh, it would be on the, uh, east side of the, the road, just, just south of Joy Road. This has got more cracks in it that I don't believe it's gonna last the winter.
Okay.
And it's got a big light on it.
Let's let Mrs. Lazlo answer. She's waiting to answer you.
I, like I told you in your email, it's DPW. It's always been DPW.
Okay, and that's great.
However, the, the follow-up email I sent you, I did forward it on to the new DTE rep. She assigned it. She's on, it's, those two poles, it's actually all along John Daly. There's also streetlight problems right now on Warren between Beach and Inkster. They are focusing more on Warren between Beach and Inkster, because all the lights are out right now. Um, I, we, there, there was a couple retirements. We used to have a great rep. This rep is good in response, but she's, I, I think she's gonna take a little bit of time for her to catch up.
Well, I do appreciate you contacting me right back, and you did it really quickly, and, uh-
Later announcement.
And it's not putting it on you. I'm just bringing it, it more to light to see what, you know, what we can do, if there's anything we can do. Uh-
I just wanted to add that I-
I know you're not gonna be the one out there gonna go and fix it yourself, so.
But we do follow up, too.
Okay.
I know Mr. Adella has something to, I'm, Councilman Adella has something-
But I just wanted to add something on that, just to, to be fair to administration and City Hall, that that is not a City Hall issue.
I understand.
No, I, no, 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 not for you. I know, you know, but I'm talking about, to clarify to residents, because I don't want the residents to get the impression like, you know, what the heck are these guys doing? Look at these poles and how are they leaving them like that? It is a, you know, a DTE thing, so just to be fair. I know you're aware of it. I'm just saying, announcing it to residents, just to clarify, that it is a DTE issue and not a city.
I, I don't want it to become an emergency problem where this pole all of a sudden falls at the intersection when there's a car sitting there or a kid riding a bike. I mean, this pole's lean, been leaning for quite some time, and it's getting bad.
With the weather getting bad, too.
I'll call Fox News.
Does it have a light on it? Does it have a light on it?
It's got, I, I don't know if it's just all cable lines or if it's got power to it or not. Uh, that's out of my realm. So I don't know who the pole belongs to, but, I mean, it's, you know, and they were just out there. The cable companies were out there putting new cable on, lines on a lot of things down on John Daly. And I, I can't believe that they would even hook up to something like that. Um, maybe there's a safety factor built in and they know how much it can lean before they do it. I, I don't know.
Okay.
But, eh, just to bring it to light, and then I got something else if you mind.
Go ahead.
Um, the second item I wanted to bring up is, uh, I'm gonna go back to my old pet peeve about the blighted, empty, closed service station at the corner of Gully and Michigan Avenue. I can't believe that we are still allowing that rundown, uh, eyesore to continue to stand. I know it's been for sale. I know there's tanks still in the ground. And again, common sense tells you, I don't know if anybody is gonna buy that building to make it a gas station, or if they want to do something else of having to pay to pull them tanks out and redo that, that area. The city needs to get to the owner, tell them to knock that building down and get rid of it. We've done it before. We should be able to do that again. And I think that's a legal issue, and I think the legal department needs to look at that and get rid of that ugly eyesore. Time I go down there, go to Home Depot, I took a look at it, with the trees growing out of the roof. Said it before, it's an eyesore. It's blight, needs to go away. No matter how much the guy wants to go over there and put plywood up and sweep the floor, the weeds places an eyesore, plain and simple. And, um, that's it for me today. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I-
I had to say something real quick about, uh, there is a new, uh, person selling the property there. Um, I, I, with all due respect, I disagree. I think we can tear houses down when they're in the middle of a block, but you're right. We, we've gotta find, we've- in the middle of a block, but, you're right, we've got to find, we've got to maybe even help this owner that's trying to sell it, and maybe assist the real estate agent on some options, maybe through administration, or maybe through community development, or even council folks, if you have some suggestions of what they can do. The new person that's selling the property for the owner is, is very responsive, he has my cell number, I have his cell number, if there's something going on there, I call him, it's, it's resolved, you know, either that day or the next day. They did put a fresh coat of paint on it last year, they did a remarkable job cleaning up the bushes along the edges, they, they removed a lot of them, people dumped.
Looks like a boarded up house next door to you, that's what it looks like, it's boarded up, it's boarded up, it, it's an eyesore. And I don't care how you want to look at it, no one's going to buy that as a gas, I believe the owner owns the two gas stations that are across the street from one another, too. So how are you going to open up as a gas station with two big gas stations right next door to you, and then you got to do all of that? That building, I don't think will ever be used again, there'd be, probably cost way too mu, much money to upgrade that building to even open up another gas station. It'll have to be torn down anyway. So that, to me, that seems like the logical thing to do, is tear, tear it down and get the tanks out.
All right, well, I'll talk to Gary, and we'll just, we'll write him a ticket, and we'll tear it down. I mean...
Well, I've been saying that for years.
I know you have, but I, I have to disagree with you on this.
That's fine.
I, this is...
I'm just voicing my opinion.
All right, all right, at this time, let's just move on, we have Councilman Abdullah here.
Respectfully, your opinion carries a lot of weight, sir, you, you have a lot of respect in the community, and, and I think what would be better is if you and I set up an appointment with the owner, sat down with him, and maybe help him come up with some suggestions of maybe someone else that can purchase it, that would make better sense.
At this point, we have Councilman Abdullah has something to add?
Well, I, I just want to add a little bit to that, you know, very similar to a station, and I'd like to commend Jerry Turfy, who was a purchaser of that gas station on Van Born, and he purchased, you're aware of which one that is, Jack, on Van Born, and he, he, yeah, he bought that, and I went and looked at it, the job that he did with it, I mean, he did a beautiful job with it, and now, it's packed with, with customers, and he's doing, but ultimately, as with anything else to sell, it's price. Okay, so in that case, you know, Mr. Turfy purchased it, put a lot of money into it, more money than I thought he was going to put into it, I mean, he did a lot of money in, and it looks beautiful, and packed, and business people in and out, as a matter of fact, he's going to be adding a coffee shop now in there, which is even better. So, if, if it can happen again, be great.
I would be great, but, you know, we've been, we're looking at this, at this service station being closed, what, fifteen years? Every bit of fifteen years.
Clark Station was closed longer than the, than...
I don't think so.
Councilman Abdullah, maybe you could be a part of that, too, with your expertise in real estate, maybe you could be part of the meeting.
Yeah, that would be great, anything to make it better.
I'm going to set a meeting up for after Thanksgiving, okay?
Perfect.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, before we go on, I want to say, I want to congratulate our new Chief of Police on his first official city council meeting, Chief Valtatorni. And many more, right? Okay, go ahead, Councilman Abdullah.
Along the, you know, along the lines of that, first of all, I want to thank Chief Lee Gavin for his many, many years of, hey, let him hear this, many, 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 many years of, of service to the community, and he did a great job, and, and I always enjoyed working with him, he always worked with us on anything that we needed for the city, and he always looked out for the city, so I thank him, you've got some big shoes to fill. And I'd also like to congratulate Chief Valtatorni, I've been practicing this, I told you, for a week.
That is true.
So, Chief Dan Valtatorni, I'd like to thank him for his future service, and you come highly recommended by Chief Gavin, and looking forward to working with you and the rest of your team. Great police officers, and I'm sure they'll do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to steal the mic for a quick second, I'd like to give a quick shout out to the Annapolis High School marching band, they were there for the ceremony, they kind of made it a, a city event, they did the Star Spangled, or the National Anthem, so it was a great job. So, thanks to Annapolis High School Marching Band.
And next time, we'll do it inside, right?
Pardon?
We're not going to be outside anymore, right?
It's only weather.
Yeah, well, you know, excuse me, but do us a favor, if and when you decide to retire someday, do it in the summer.
Yeah.
It was so cold that day.
You know, we should do an ordinance on that.
Yeah, you have to do it in July or August, no rain.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I want to congratulate Chief Dan also, and now I'm not the only ones that are throwing out the one-liners, if you've been at the ceremony, he's, he's the king of one-liners there, it's pretty funny, had a good time, really good speech he made, and I did forget a couple things, really quick things, is it's leaf cleaning season now in the streets, I want to tell everybody, don't rake your leaves into the street, if they're on your grass, you got to bag them up, and we've had a lot of complaints about the city missing some areas, we're trying to address that, so if you, you know, if, if you can call DPW, if you have an issue with that, contact your local councilmen, maybe they can help you out, or councilperson. And, I had an issue today, maybe the mayor can address this, on my street, they came and they picked up the, the recycling bins, and everywhere on my street, I make sure they put their cans on the grass, so it's clear for the street sweepers, and five cans were placed in the street, three of them knocked over, and I stopped the guy, gave him my card, told him I was a councilman, I said, you can't be doing this, he said, okay, I said, you can pick them up, and he said he didn't have time. But that, maybe that's something the mayor could address, the sanitation company that's taking care of it, that they knocked those cans into the street, or they take them off the grass and dump them, put them in the street, then the street sweeper can't sweep in front of that person's house. And, so, and one thing is, in, in your house, in your toilets, there's four things you put down in your toilet, two of them are water and toilet paper, okay, and that's all, there's four things, not, not baby wipes, any other kind of things, just those four things only, and everybody, don't forget to turn your porch lights on, thanks.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Constance?
Councilman Abdullah referenced Van Born Road, we're seeing the, at least the traffic and the cars on Van Born for Ford utilizing the old Masco property, it's great, we got a shoe repair business from Dearborn, took over Pete Shoe Repair, the Clark Station that's been closed for a long time, so hopefully, everything with, not hopefully, but everything with, the city of Taylor will be moving forward, and we'll, we'll see some new businesses, maybe even the old Giant System, the new Telway Hamburgers will open up.
Council Chair, just one more to piggyback on, Mr. Wenzel, on the leaf thing, people need to take a little pride in where they live and help DPW out a little bit, too, by cleaning up some of their, in front of their, or under their curb, no way to, you know, to clean the whole street, and when I pick up my leaves, I rake up whatever's underneath my curb, pick them up, bag them, goes a long way in keeping the city and, and our storm drains clean. The city can't possibly be out sweeping every single street, every single day in this city for every leaf that drops in the city, it just, it's, it's impossible, so a little bit of help from the homeowners goes a long way, and we've discussed this before about having a little pride where you live.
Okay, at this point, we have Mr. Clerk has an announcement.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I've got a lot to say tonight, but it looks like we might get out of here at a reasonable hour, so stop me at any time you want to, so, I don't want to be the one to hold us up tonight. First and foremost, I think the most important thing I have to say is, Sunday was Veterans' Day, and I would like to thank all of our veterans, anybody serving, anybody who has a family member serving, we are so appreciative of your service to our country and to us as citizens, so, thank you. Do we have any veterans here today? Mr. Bazey, any other people in the audience? Former councilman. So, so thank you, when you see a veteran, I always thank them. The election, congratulations to the residents of Dearborn Heights, congratulations, folks, fifty percent turnout.
Wow.
Phenomenal, phenomenal, so. I guess we could say it's about time that we started coming out, and, so, so thank you, all those who voted, and...
In bad weather, too.
I, I guess I have to say that we had our, our issues on, on Election Day, and most of them were equipment related. I met with the mayor and the council chair prior to the election, I have not been happy with the equipment ever since we've got it, it's, it's new and it's not functioning right. Precinct nine would not accept ballots, precinct seven tabulator completely froze, seven and eight, the handicap machine froze, precinct fourteen, that machine froze, that was all by ten fifteen in the morning. At 103, I've got several, I, I just want the residents to know, I've got several emails that I was sending during the day of issues, I won't read them all, but, here's, these were sent to the company, the vice president, the director of elections for Wayne County, we are only three hours into the election, and they've been putting out equipment problem fires for two hours, I find this totally unacceptable and hope you do as well. Here's another one at 103, same issue at precinct eighteen as precinct nine, tabulator rejecting most ballots, accepting an occasional sporadic ballot, bad things happening today, folks, Walt is not a happy camper. We're still waiting for a reply regarding an AV tabulator replacement in the back, we need a replacement tabulator, or we will be here till tomorrow. We had to start recounting because of a tabulator failure in the back. So, however, my people are well-trained, and we recognize that there were problems, and, and we, we addressed them. We did not get the results until three o'clock in the morning, nobody is more unhappy about that than I am. I certainly did not want to be here until that time. After we got the results, I had to go downtown, and, folks, I got home at six o'clock in the morning. We try our hardest, this equipment is not doing the job that it was promised to do, and I just want you to know that. There were several other communities that, that had the same issues, if you read the paper, it was all over the free press on, on the website, I talked to one of the gross points, they're much smaller than us, they didn't get done till three o'clock in the morning, another one of, several of our neighboring communities, when I got downtown, were still not there. But what, what I want to say is, I want to say thank you to each and every one of our precinct workers, each and every one of our AV workers, it is amazing the job that they did, we had people that worked eighteen hours, folks, counting absentee ballots. Age has no, age has no bearing on the ability to do any kind of job or anything, but one of them is in their eighties, and they stayed here and counted ballots, and every one of those people did not abandon ship, they left with a smile on their face, many said, we'll be back, don't worry about it, Walt. We can't get workers here, folks, we have sixteen people counting the AV board, I put on an extra AV board because I knew it was going to be difficult, we bought more equipment, we are trying hard. Nine of those people are City of Detroit, are City of Dearborn Heights residents, we, we can't get people to work. In precinct five and six, Sabineus, neither co-chair showed up to the mandatory meeting, we didn't know whether they were coming or not, we called, emailed, called friends of theirs that knew them, never responded, we had to provide for that in case they didn't come, they didn't. At five o'clock in the morning, I received a phone call that the precinct chair from precinct five fell while getting ready for work, and was in the hospital. These are things that we have to do, folks, to overcome these elections, and our workers, our workers did it, they did it, and I want to thank each and every one of them, Nancy Brier is here in the audience, one of our longtime workers. If you see a pole worker, if you see somebody who put in eighteen hours, thank them, because it's only them that puts this election on. Putting on an election is like orchestrating a three-hundred-piece band, if you, if you, folks really don't know, we got two hundred pole workers, we got to have the equipment delivered, the truck broke down, okay? We have to have the janitors open the door on time, you have to, you read all the stuff in the papers, folks, about all this stuff going wrong, and it's always, you depend on so many different people to come through for you, people you don't know, some people you know, and every pitfall is, you know, my God, he didn't do his job, or she didn't do his job, or that clerk is a, not a good clerk, and, and just know that we prepare for the most, we knew there was going to be a lot, we put out extra tables, we called ahead of time, we put out portable booths, my understanding, we didn't, you look at the lines in the papers, we didn't, we, we managed that, those things, but we could not manage those machines this time. So, with that being said, I also want to thank the students of Crestwood, we had the honor society, what wonderful young men and ladies, they are just fantastic, they were so helpful to us, we had a record turnout, record participation from them, I met with them before the election, and they promised even better next time, so, they're having wonderful experience working with us, and, it's great. So, I, I think I've said enough, but we, we had, we had people working that had the flu, we had a lady that had a personal tragedy and had a family member pass away, but she worked, that, that's amazing, that's amazing. So, thank you once again, each and every one of our pole workers, my fabulous pit crew who, God love them, because I, I do too, they're, they're just, did a fabulous job, and, thank you to the voters, and, thank you to everybody who came out and, and understood what kind of difficult circumstances we work under, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk, at this time, and then we're going to move on, because we're getting too late here.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk, I got to say a special happy birthday to Larry Gerard, who's going to be turning one hundred years old on November twenty-first, and we're having a special little birthday party for him, what day is it, Mayor, do you know? Do you know, Kim, what day it is?
You know what, I don't have, I think Saint Sebastian's Day, and I'm not...
We're having one at the Eaton Center.
Yeah, I'm sure of the date.
And I was, I was told it might be tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
He's a wonderful, wonderful guy.
Yeah, really great guy, big participant in our church, reads the gospel every Sunday still, eyesight's great, talk to him, one hundred years old.
He's cool, too.
What does he eat?
At the Eaton Center.
I don't know what he eats, what he drinks, that's what we want to know.
Okay.
Yeah, well, okay, now...
At this time, we're going to open up the public announcements.
Captain Myers from the Police Department, just to let everyone know, our citizens and council, the fundraiser that the Police Department's been doing for the month of November, many of the citizens are asking why our officers, especially our uniform officers, aren't cleanly shaven, for the month of November, they've taken on the No Shave November charity event, this year, in previous years, we've done, we bought hat and gloves for our, our students in our district, last year, it was for one of our recovery homes, this year, we're taking our donations that we've collected for not shaving for the month of November, or if you're a female employee, wearing blue jeans and hoodies, if you work inside, we'll be now donating that money to both of our senior centers, Carrie Hatton, our crime prevention officer, is working with the senior centers, and we are going to fill their pantries with whatever they need, both at the Eaton Center and at the Berwin Center, right now, we have a little over two thousand dollars that we've collected from our officers, and we'll be donating that to fill their pantry. So if you see an officer that's not cleanly shaven, it's not because we don't care, it's because the chief has graciously allowed us to do this for one month a year, his is a little whiter than most, his beard, but he's getting through it, and we'll have a great charity event, and feel free to donate to those senior centers, because they could really use our help as well.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I've just got an update on what's going on at the Eaton Center that I wanted to give to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Wow. Well, it looks like a lot of stuff has been moving along.
A few days ago.
If you guys have any questions later, you can certainly give me a call, and, you know, I'll answer any questions you have in regards to this, we've got some ideas about some of the things, hopefully to lower the costs, most of the stuff is, we're waiting for prices to come in on some of the things that we're doing, so, also, I'd like to make sure that you put on your agenda, and also the public, too, we have our tree lighting coming up Tuesday, December fourth, at... Um, most of the stuff is, we're waiting for prices, uh, to come in on some of the things that we're doing. So, also, I'd like to make sure that you put on your agenda, and also the public, too. Uh, we have our tree lighting coming up Tuesday, December fourth. It starts at 6:30 here at City Hall. We are gonna do some new and exciting things that night, so, um, be ready to be impressed. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and we're gonna have a great time, so.
Santa gonna be there?
Uh, you will be getting invitations for those. We just have not, um, gotten those yet, but I wanted to, uh, give you the date.
Santa gonna be there?
Santa's going to be there, yes.
Kim, good job on this.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Mark Roberts, uh, from Secresse Wardle, one of the attorneys that assists the city. I just wanted to bring to your attention, uh, something, and I discussed this with the chairwoman this afternoon, and she suggested I come by just to give you a heads-up on it. I think we were here several months ago about an ordinance that we were discussing about the, at that time, the Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act. Obviously, with the last election and the adoption of the new proposal one, uh, there's some other considerations that the council needs to address. And the reason I'm stopping by tonight is that there is one that is potentially time-sensitive, that should actually be, uh, to be safe, should be addressed at your next meeting. Uh, and I, it's a, an opt-out provision. Uh, and if directed from council, I will prepare the ordinance for your consideration next week, or next meeting. And, uh, and if necessary, we can appear and answer any questions on that at that time. Again, it is something that may be, uh, an abundance of caution, but it's something that should be addressed at your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair. Mark, just prepare it, submit it to the mayor, so it gets onto the agenda, and then be prepared to show up for that meeting, so that they can, uh, the council can have an opportunity to consider it.
I will absolutely do.
Are we going to, or what are we doing?
Yeah, that's cool.
We don't know what to...
Yeah. So, next one.
Okay. Any other public announcements? At this time, I will open it up to the general public. Three-minute limit. Name and address, please come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Ned Apigian, and, uh, I've presented this before. There's, I'm gonna make a short comment about three subjects in three minutes, and then talk to you about something that's more important. The three comments are, the photographs that I'm bringing, I brought before, and I'd like to know what would be done about it. First one there shows a picture of a metal fence in my neighborhood that's built within the street right of way. I realize that average people, and unfortunately, I'm not sure the people that are enforcing the laws, know what it is. You cannot build things in the street right of way, whether they're, uh, masonry, uh, mailboxes, as the two pictures show, and something needs to be done about it. If someone drives down the street and runs into those things, and someone is hurt, or someone is killed, the city will pay. Those little meetings you have in the back room when the city attorneys come and they say, "This is what it's gonna cost to defend this. I suggest you pay, because it's cheaper." I never seen, when I was on the council, anything other but paying. So, those three subjects, I wish you, council thinks about. I haven't got to the third one. And invite me to, uh, a meeting, and we can talk about it and share my ideas.
Thank you.
The third one is, uh, the tree thing. The other day, I was gassing my car, and a resident, uh, who recognized me, I don't come here every time, and would, told me about the Canton Tree Ordinance fine, of which Councilman Abdullah told me about, the city fined somebody $400,000. I didn't know what this resident told me, that the person who cut the trees, the firm that cut the trees, was fined $400,000 as well. That's what we have to do. We have to make it so expensive that you would, the first person that reads about it in the press and guide, will not touch a tree that they're not supposed to. Eight hundred thousand dollars in the rainy day fund, Mr. Mayor, would just be wonderful, wouldn't it? Anyway, the topic I want to talk about, which I should have mentioned previously, is, as an architect, I intend, I attend continuing education meetings, usually, most of the time with Symboia, the Southeast Michigan Council of Governments, and I'm glad, Mr. Roberts, is he still here? Oh, unfortunately, he's not here. Uh, our planning consultants should be aware of this. At one of those meetings, I'm not sure which code we've adopted, by this time, we should have adopted the 2015 code. In that lecture, I discovered that in the building code, there's a provision saying that no side yard can be less than five feet. And in, here in Dearborn Heights, if I'm not mistaken, on a forty-foot lot, we have a thirty percent, which means it's four on one side and eight on the other. I remember working on something like that with the previous consultants that we had.
Thank you. We're at the three-minute limit.
Uh, this is very important.
I'm understanding, but there's a three-minute limit.
Believe me. Our ordinance has to change. Other words, you cannot build a building that has a window or a door that's less than five feet. So, that ordinance has to be changed, and it's a big problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman Yaki?
Thank you. In terms of, um, the Canton Ordinance, if, if people do look into that, there has been, um, legislation that has been introduced in Lansing, which essentially would prohibit anything of this nature and actually reverse fines back to 2017. Given the fact that our current ordinances are really more directed, and we are a much more residential community, uh, from my review of the legislation, it doesn't look like it would necessarily have a huge impact on us. But if we were to try to take that approach, it's very questionable, as long as this legislation passes. I know the Canton Township is, is fighting against it, but, uh, it is, right now, has been introduced.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Please state your name. Adrosen, three minutes, please.
354 Rosemary. November seventeen is the deadline, I think, to respond to the treasurer of the state about, uh, the retiree pension fund. Did the city do anything about action plan we should submit to the treasurer of the state?
Uh, we are filing a, um...
Extension request.
Extension request, thank you. Uh, we've been trying to get it on the council agenda, and we are, one of the things we're waiting for is, we had to get the actuarial report, but we pretty much have an idea as to how to report this. We've also been in, uh, contact with a couple other, um, communities around us in regards to how to file. And so, the package is being put together. I would hope we would, uh, there's about four things that this council needs to do before the end of the year. Meet on Public Act, uh, 202, as you just mentioned, approval of the water budget, uh, receive the audit report, and in addition, um, we need to meet with our, um, attorneys to talk about, uh, the basin, the city acquiring the basin from, um, Wayne County, and also talk about the Ekoris Creek and that project. So, we're hoping to get on the agenda to satisfy all four. There might be other items that I'm not aware of, but those are, those are four important matters at the city. So, we, we were told, and we did file the, um, extension, and once we get the, the actuarial report, we got one for the whole city, but we need it broken down by, um, groups, because what we do with police and fire will be separate from what we do with the general government.
The reason I'm asking, because I attended Dearborn City Council meeting, they have $82 million in their fund, and they bonded, I think, 35 millions, so they can be at the forty percent. I hope the city will do something, you know, so we can cover that.
We can't bond because of the fact that, uh, you have to have a double A rating. And we have, we have an A rating, which is excellent, but we don't have a double A rating. So, many communities in Michigan cannot go the bonding right.
I just, I just hope we, we fix this problem in a way that all the employees get their benefit, you know, as they should. The second thing, I did look at the MOU from, uh, from September twenty-nine, 2011. Uh, there was no mention whatsoever about thirty percent increase in that memorandum of understanding, September nine, 2011, was asked me at that time. And, uh, I did some calculation based on seventy-two employees who are, belong to unions, and I took average around $45,000 a year. Uh, this will cost the city approximately, if we go with that, around $1 million a year. And I hope, when the city council and the administration look at this thirty percent increase in salaries, if they go back to five days, and if you extend it to the, uh, elected officials, that will cost another $426, uh, $20,000. So, we're looking close to one and a half million dollars if that goes through. So, I, I hope with what we have for the retiree and that big, you know, number, 168, I think we will be okay with $70 million. I hope, you know, we consider those numbers when we make a decision on this contract and the approval and the extension. And, uh, even if, uh, you let them buy four years, that will hit us, too, in the long run. If somebody retired at fifty-five and lived fifteen more years, it's going to cost the city close to $5,400,000 a year if those people retire at that time.
Just, if I might, one is, uh, the elected officials, and, and any money that we get doesn't get affected by the union contract. That is done by a separate board, and so that has no effect. I didn't really want to talk about this, but I think it's important, because we took a lot of heat for it tonight. The way that I would interpret that amount is that the union does not want to go to five days. That was not put in by the administration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comment?
Um, Chrissy Laszlo.
We, excuse me, watch your language in this chambers. Point of order!
Go on.
Point of order. Watch your language. We do stop it when there's conversation from our table, and then we just time what you say directly. And you went over, but I let you. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
I probably should have said this during, um, announcements. Um, my name is Chrissy Laszlo. Um, I'm on Charlesworth Street. Uh, one of the council members mentioned something about leaf, about leaf pickup. We, we haven't been receiving calls about missing leaves. GFL has been on, has been doing really good picking up the leaves. There was a decision in keeping residents to a limit of ten bags of leaves, in which case, GFL would be done and out of the city by the required time, or allowing residents to put out the thirty to sixty to over a hundred bags out on the street, and letting GFL pick them up. We decided to go that route, especially with the weather last week being snowy, where every single leaf pretty much came down overnight. Um, it, it then thod, so we, usually, it's tapered. So, um, if there is a complaint, you can call the mayor's office, you can call the DPW. But just so, um, I, I know Councilman Wenzel brought it up, and we did hear some people on Facebook, "Why are they here after seven?" They're here after seven, because we're allowing you to put out as many bags as you want to clean it up for winter. Um, one more thing in regards to that, just so everybody knows, um, with this new contract with GFL, we do allow leaf pickup through the second week of December. So, it's not after Thanksgiving. We are getting a lot of calls in DPW. It's through the second week of December, you're allowed to put out leaves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh. Mrs. Laszlo? Exactly how long do they collect leaves into December, right?
The second week.
Second week? Okay. Just so everybody knows.
We extended it with that contract additional two weeks.
Okay. Great.
Good information. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Move to the chair.